Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
This starts our public hearing phase of tonight's meeting. Our regular city council meeting will begin after the public hearing. The City of Natchitoches will hold, and I'm reading from the document here, a public hearing at 5:30 on March 10th, 2025, at the council chambers where we are. The purpose of the meeting is to obtain views on the housing and community development needs of the city and to discuss the submission of an application for funding under the state of Louisiana Fiscal Year 2026-2027 Community Development Block Grant Program, LCDBG as it is known. And at this time, I want to ask to come to the podium, Mr. Thomas McGee, Frye McGee, and Mr. Thomas, just state your first and last name and just kind of, you know, guide us through this public hearing, sir.
Okay. Thank you for having me. I'm Thomas McGee with Frye McGee LLC out of Ball. We're currently working with the city on a couple of LCDBG projects. And the state does the LCDBG program in two-year cycles, and it's time to start the process for the '26-'27 cycle. The program will fund public facilities, which is sewer, water, and road constructions. They set aside $12 million for that program. You can apply for up to $2 million for sewer and water improvements and $1 million for street improvements. All activities have to principally benefit low and moderate income areas of the city, which means at least 51% of the residents have to be of low and moderate income. The program also funds clearance, which is the demolition of dilapidated housing. That does not have an income requirement. The only requirement of that is that the houses have to be vacant and in a state of disrepair. The state is setting aside $6 million for that program, and the city is eligible to apply for $750,000 for that with a minimum of $150,000. And I believe the city has one of those currently funded that y'all are working through right now.
Which one did you?
The clearance.
The clearance, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And with the public facilities and the clearance, you can only have one open at a time, except for the existing street grant that you have, which was an exception to that. It's a '23 funded project, which you can have a second one open, even though you have that street project open currently. But for the clearance, since you have that one open, you'd have to close that out before you can apply for the next one. And then the other programs that they fund is the economic development. That is tied to job creation, and it is tied to infrastructure improvements that a private business needs in order to locate within the city. And again, that's tied to job creation. That's on a, you know, as-needed basis. And that's pretty much an overview of what they fund. If y'all have any questions or any public comments, I'd be happy to address those.
I guess, Mr. McGee, so this is going to be good. This public hearing makes us good for two years.
Yes, sir.
So then we could legitimately apply to one of these areas.
Yes, sir.
The applications, are they due at different times? How close would either one of, whether it's for streets, water, sewer, make a difference as a new one?
Right.
So do you kind of generally know when the applications would be due?
Yes, sir. So in order to be eligible for the clearance program, you'd have to have that closed out in July of this year, which that's not going to happen. So in order to be eligible for '27, you would have to be closed out by next July, and then those applications will be due in December of '26. And then for the public facilities, those applications are also due in December. It's December 15th is their deadline each year.
What about Make a Difference? Do you know about that one?
Yes, sir. So basically what they're, and that's on a first-come, first-served basis. They kind of cherry pick what they want to fund on that. And that's pretty much a brand-new program. I believe they've only funded one of those in the state. The City of West Monroe got a grant for that. And what they're looking for is funding multiple activities in order to, quote, "make a difference in your community." I haven't experienced one of those, but those require the city to submit a letter of intent, which I can provide you some information on what that letter requires. It's basically what your vision is, how you plan on making a difference in your community. And I believe those are due in July as well.
How much funding for that, did you say?
They set aside $2 million. And there's no minimum. That's the maximum. And like I said, the only one I know about is in West Monroe. They got one there doing some street improvements. They're doing clearance of houses and, I believe, some streetscapes. But I've asked for their full project application just to see, you know, what they did. But as I understand, they picked an area of the city and said, "We want to, you know, basically clean this area."
Improve it, yeah.
And that goes into how they want to fund multiple activities. So they're doing public facilities with the streets, improvements, and then a clearance with, you know, tearing down the dilapidated houses in the area.
Is there any clearing funding for municipal buildings?
No, sir. No, sir. The clearance program will do commercial, but it won't do any public buildings.
So this money can be used in planning and zoning? In our planning and zoning department? For dilapidated business?
Demolition.
Right, that's what you're saying, okay.
Yes, ma'am. And y'all have one of those right now? They can be tricky, especially once you get into the environmental, you know, associated with old houses. But yes, ma'am, that's what it's for.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We certainly appreciate you traveling over from the big city of Ball, Louisiana.
Big Ball.
I just have one more, it's not really a question, but maybe make it clear. This is not for persons in homes to help rehabilitate people living in homes.
No, ma'am.
Just want to make that clear.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Thank you. Because we're going to get some calls about that. Thank you.
No problem.
And what we were saying, we think years ago, they used to allow some home improvement, but lately, they've been restricting it.
It's probably been 20 years since they've done that.
They've been restricting it to water, sewer.
And roads.
Roads, and then they added clearance and Make a Difference recently. But it's largely been water, sewer, streets, council members.
So when it comes to water, sewer, I mean, replacing water lines is a priority. I mean, that's, that covers anything to do with that, correct?
Yes, sir. So the public facilities program is very competitive. So you really have to show the need for it. Compliance orders, administrative orders, ball advisories that you have to publish, any kind of documentation on your system that, you know, shows the need, that really gives you an opportunity to get the money. If you just apply saying, "We have undersized lines," that's really not that strong of a severity of the project.
Brown water.
Yeah. And having to place lead lines, we've got a lot of those.
Yeah, there has been a push for that. I think they've started, I don't know if they've done it yet, but they've started looking at when they rate the water systems. They rate it on like an A to an F. They've been considering that pretty strongly, especially, you know, the things happening throughout the country on that. Hopefully, Natchitoches doesn't have that kind of disaster with lead pipes. That would be horrible.
It would be.
Mr. Thomas, do y'all also deal with like drainage?
This program doesn't fund drainage. It will as like associated with the road project, you know, roadside dishes, fixing culverts in driveways and that sort of thing. But it's primarily a road project with ancillary drainage improvement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. All right. This ends our public hearing section. We are now going to have our regular, regularly scheduled city council meeting for March 10th, 2025. All right? We're going to have prayer about yours truly, and then Councilman PT is going to lead us in the pledge. Let us pray. Gracious God, our Father, we come before you today, thanking you for this day that you have given us. We have learned to not take it for granted because it's a day that has not been promised to us. Let us make the most of every day in the lives of our families, in our personal lives, but also, God, as it relates to our city. And let us work well and work as a team together to improve and advance our city that we love so dearly. We're still praying for those who are directly impacted by the closure of the International Paper. Thank you for continued job placement and just continue to be with those families. Thank you for all of those who helped to make this city run, every city employee. We thank you that they're always at their best so that we can produce a great result for the residents who live here, for our first responders. Thank you for being with them and guiding them and each and every person. We thank you, Lord God, for our decision-making tonight. Let it be in such a way that brings you pleasure and pleases you. We give you glory and praise. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me if I could pledge a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you, Councilman PT, for leading us in the pledge. We now have the reading and approval of our minutes from our most recent meeting on February 24th, 2025.
Mayor, I can make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of February 24th, 2025, and that they be adopted as recorded with no corrections.
I second it.
Motion made and seconded to accept the minutes as they have been recorded. Any comment about this particular motion from anybody? All right, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. I'm going to read from this as I typically do, but ask that you would adhere to it. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones during this meeting. Addressing the city council during the meeting. The city council encourages public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. However, this time limit may be reduced if there are numerous speakers on a particular item. To ensure efficient proceedings, all persons addressing the city council shall state their name and shall speak in a civil and courteous manner. Speakers shall address the agenda topic only to which they are speaking on and shall not be repetitive. Members of the audience, please respect the rights of others and do not create noise or other disturbances so as to disrupt or disturb persons who are addressing the city council, council members who are speaking, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. And again, I appreciate your adherence to these instructions. We are going to now progress in the agenda to special recognition, and that is our Employee of the Month, Mrs. Natasha Goldston. And so grateful for her. We will allow her direct reporter, her director, Clarissa Brown Smith, to have some remarks about the work product that Mrs. Goldston performs on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Natasha is a wonderful employee. Natasha has been here 23 years, or will be 23 years this year. And she is our councilor, clerk, and she just does such a wonderful job, very detail-oriented, very timely, a great asset to the city. We are definitely lucky to have her and have had her for so long. I asked her when, how many more years she was going to give me. So she gave me a good number. I won't say it here, but she gave me a good number. So we'll have her for a little bit longer. But she's a very well-deserving employee.
She is that.
Consument professional, you know, finance, and to some extent, maybe air department purchasing. These are folks that you don't really see much, that are behind the doors, that are in the office. But do not take that to mean that their job and what they do for us is not valuable, because it certainly is. And so Natasha Goldston is a great example of what you want an employee to be. So I think that's certainly deserving of her. And we just, again, want to recognize those who are doing some great work for us and kind of bring them out from the shadows a little bit and let you all, you know, learn about them and certainly appreciate them. I think her, I don't know if it hit Facebook, but we've got those questions that she has to answer and certainly pay attention to that on the City of Natchitoches Facebook page, all right? But again, we do appreciate her work and her dedication to the City of Natchitoches. Next, we've got a proclamation. We don't have anybody receiving it for us today, but we do want to read it as this is Women's History Month, and our councilwoman at large is going to read this proclamation for us.
Thank you, Mayor. This is proclamation from the City of Natchitoches. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropy and culture institutions in our nation. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic backgrounds served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive change movement. Thank you. And whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military, and American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created an impartial and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, I, Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. of the City of Natchitoches, hereby proclaim that March is designated as Women's History Month in the City of Natchitoches and will call upon all citizens to observe this month and to invite all citizens to visit www.women'shistorymonth.gov to learn more about the vital contributions of women to our nation's history. And signed by Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman at large Smith. And I'll say this, I didn't ask anybody particularly, but I tell you what, last Friday was an amazing image to me. We were talking about the transition of our, you know, from one fiscal agent to the next. And as I looked around that room, Clarissa, I was the only guy in the room. The only guy. So I'm going to ask my lady, we've got some ladies here from Bank of Montgomery. Would y'all mind, can we deliver this proclamation to y'all? If y'all don't mind letting us do that. Councilwoman at large Smith, why don't we take a picture with them to celebrate and recognize Women's History Month? I appreciate y'all.
They were at the meeting last Friday. Weren't you all there? One of you were there at the meeting Friday?
Yeah, come on up.
Uh huh, yeah, the meeting that we had. Thank you, ladies, so much for this.
See, can I get you to take a picture? Usually we have a drone. Come on, Michelle, we're progressing. Should I travel? Should I? Come on. Y'all picture.
We read it, but we need to approve it. We need a second, and we need to approve it.
I second it.
All right, motion made and seconded. I put the card a little bit, but I think this one is not going to be in trouble.
Oh, I didn't make a motion, sorry.
Did you move? Did you move?
I make a motion that we, I make a motion that proclamation 021 of 2024 be adopted, be approved.
Okay.
2025, I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comment about this Women's History Proclamation? All right, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next, we have a final. We have two that are for final, and one of them is read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll read this in title only as it was introduced at the last council meeting. Ordinance number four of 2025 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Natchitoches, Ronnie Williams Jr., to enter into a banking services agreement with Bank of Montgomery and approving of the terms and conditions of same, all after due compliance with the law and further providing for advertising and for an effective date in a move that we adopt ordinance number four of 2025.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We have Mr. Ken Hale here on the, whenever we did our meeting, last meeting in February. Clarissa, you want to speak to this a little bit?
Well, we had a very productive meeting on, last week. Had our first meeting of the minds with Bank of Montgomery. We're very excited for them to be our new fiscal agent. Just like to remind everyone that this came about because our current fiscal institution is being bought out by a credit union, and municipal funds cannot be held with the credit union. So this prompted us to go ahead and put out the RFP to acquire a new fiscal agent. So BOM was the recipient of that RFP. And again, we are excited to partner with them. They're a great community bank, so I think it'll be very beneficial for us to work together. We do have some representatives here, so if you would like to say anything or not, okay? But again, we had a great first meeting. They are very enthusiastic about being the fiscal agent for the city. So we are excited as well. So good things to come.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown Smith. Any comments or questions here? She pretty much explained it straightforward, that, you know, we kind of, we have to do this by law. All right, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next ordinance that's for final is read by Councilwoman at large Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 005, which is the ordinance amending the 2024-2025 budget to reflect additional revenues and expenditures. And it was introduced at the February 24th meeting, council meeting. And I make a motion that we approve the adoption of ordinance number 005 of 2025.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mrs. Brown Smith, there's sent me some notes that I shared with the city council and everybody who was here and those who may have watched through the livestream. But Mrs. Brown Smith, do you want to kind of restate why we're having to do the budget amendment at this time?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So at this point in our fiscal year, our health insurance coverage, the cost of that has exceeded what was actually budgeted. And that happens from time to time. We are a self-insured company, so we furnish our own health insurance plan. So based on what the premiums are, which is the deductions that come out of each employee's paycheck that's signed up with our health insurance, the cost has exceeded that. Now, we will be able to recoup some of that excess at the end of the year through a, through a loss program that the insurance companies have, but it won't cover the entire loss. Right now, we are about one and a half million over, which means that we've had some large claims to come through this year. Can't disclose the details of those, but we did have some large claims to come through. So as we go into our next fiscal year, we'll definitely take a look at what we are budgeting for a health insurance cost, especially if we still have the same listing of employees, those employees that may have encountered some things that have, were very costly this year. We'll definitely right-size our budget for the next fiscal year. This is what this is. This will be a transfer, just to make sure that we are very clear. This is an additional transfer from our utility revenue. So I just want to make sure that we are clear on that, that this is where it's coming from. Our utility fund right now sits at about four and a half million. So we're definitely at a really good place. So it's not a drastic hit, but I definitely want to be clear on where that transfer is going to be coming from. Yes.
Sort of thing you really don't have any control over?
No.
In terms of the skyrocketing health insurance costs and
Yes, sir.
Things that
Yes, sir.
Need to happen. Any comments or questions? All right, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. We have three ordinances that are going to be introduced tonight. The first one, though, is going to be read by Councilman PT. Our director of planning and zoning, I know she's going to speak a lot to this. So Councilman PT, it's in your hands.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for introduction. Ordinance number 006 of 2025, an ordinance declaring certain buildings unsafe and recommending that the same be demolished or put into repair to comply with the building code. Whereas the director of planning and zoning and the city building inspector have filed written reports with the city council declaring that the buildings listed below are in dangerous and unsanitary condition, which makes them unsafe and endangering the public's welfare. The first property is owned by Joseph Rue, located at 214 Sirad Street. Property two, Gloria Evans, located at 220 Duplex Street. Property three, Angel Kiddesheen, located at 320 Keegan Drive. Property number four, it's Angela Raschel, and this property is located at 509 Scott Loop. Property five, correction, number five and six, is Robert Hamilton, and this property is located at 645 Gentile Street and also 613 Gentile Street. Property number seven, Cynthia Midario, this property is located at 817 Fourth Street. Miss Shantrey, I need to slow down. I see you've got some pictures with the properties, huh? Okay. Okay.
Mr. Steve has the control.
Okay, gotcha. The next property is owned by Paul Solomon at 852 Second Street. Property number nine Albert Peyton, 1124 Welch Street. Property ten Percy Lucas at 1427 St. John Street.
Chris, I need to make a motion for that one.
Okay.
That one should be removed or make a motion to amend the application for that particular part of land.
Yeah, I think we said we would just state on the record, how we need to say that?
I, I think we can just let the minutes, this is just for introduction, we can let the minutes reflect that we're gonna remove number 10 Percy Lucas from the condemnation report.
That's been resolved, I'm guessing, is it?
Or it's not time yet for it to be?
It's not time yet.
It's not, it hasn't met all the?
I got you.
Requirements to be on. So I think Stacy, I think we heard what you said, I think that could go forward, what we're saying.
Taking number 10 off.
Councilwoman P T.
Okay. Property number 11 and 12 is owned by Dwight Davis, this property is located at 119 South Bend Drive and 124 South Bend Drive. Renee Johnson, property located at 117 South Bend Drive. Property 14 TL and JS Properties LLC, this property is located at 128 South Bend Drive. Justin Normad, this property is located at 115 Demazir Street, and the last property is TL and JS Properties, and this is a lot located, a lot 36 at South Bend Drive. That's it, cheers.
Okay, all right, thank you, Councilwoman P T. Shantrell, just?
Let me go to the South Bend. The South Bend properties. So the people on South Bend, we notified the residents of that trailer park. The South Bend Trailer Park is the one at the dead end of, behind Abbey Drive, that little small, it's right behind the Calvin Braxton Trailer Park that we had issues with last summer. So this is a smaller one that's kinda tucked behind it. So we sent notices to all the property owners or people that had individual trailers on that property, if they were living in them, letting them know that we weren't gonna condemn the property because on that property, there are several trailers that's either burned, fallen over, they need to be removed.
Sound like you're going to Lakeview over there?
Yes, right behind Lakeview.
Okay, I know where you're talking about.
Right, so it's actually owned by TL and JS Properties, they own the grounds, but several of those trailers are individually owned, but we still had to send the owners of those trailers that are still there, notification that we will be condemning the whole trailer park. I think Mr. Dwight, which is sitting here, Mr. Dwight, you wanna speak with about, if that's possible, if you wanted to?
How y'all doing?
Yeah, he's on.
Oh, my name is Dwight Davis, and I own five properties in South Bend, but I just spoke with Mr. Ivan Daniel, McDaniel, he's a fireman, and he's in control of the properties, and we just came to agreement. So a lot of the stuff y'all looking at, me and him already been talking about cleaning it up down there, and we just came to agreements, agreement last week on the price to take out the old trailers and stuff that's down there and abandoned, you know, not, not close up the ones that are burned down, and like Ms. Shantrell said, a lot of those trailers are individually owned down there, and actually one y'all just showed on, on, on a picture up here, don't even look like that anymore, I got pictures of it here, two of them that y'all showed up here, they don't even look like the way they was looking on these pictures.
They look better?
Yes.
Like livable, more livable?
Yes, and also, Ms. Shantrell and Ms.?
Nicole.
Ms. Oats, they, they been inside the trailers down there, you looking at them from the outside, but when you actually walk inside the trailers, they don't, the outside, you know, you might, because she said, oh, when she walked in, she was like, oh, well, looking at the outside, it looks like it needs to be condemned, but as you walk, the floors are sturdy, everything, like I said, I have pictures right here of one of the trailers, if I could put it up on the screen so y'all could see it somehow.
The only way you could do that is if you send it to him, but?
Yeah, I advised him that, we still have, this is just introductory.
Yeah.
So we'll work on getting that to final.
And all that, we, we got a contract, you know, like I said, I got a contract, I did a lot of work for you, Ms. Ronnie, and, and Ms. Shantrell, Ms. Shantrell, cleaning up the properties around Naakadish, so, and we actually cleaned that property one time before, and the homeowner, I mean, the property owner didn't wanna pay, so we had to stop, but we did have it cleaned one time, and it was lovely down there, so we gonna get it back in shape if y'all just give us a little time. We, with the rain, actually stopped, delayed the process, we supposed to start today actually pulling the trash that's around the building, around the structures, home, pulling that out and hauling it out. So like I said, if y'all just give us a little time, we'll get it together, and I also talked to Mr. McDaniel about putting out notices about the vehicles that's out there that's not running and skirting around the bottom of the trailers and stuff like that, so he said he would type something up and send it out, so I was actually just waiting on him on that part. But, I mean, it's a nice little community down there, everybody get together, I mean, get along, you know, it ain't no trouble down there and stuff like that, but some of the stuff is in bad shape down there that needs to be taken out, and like I said, we did talk and agreed to take the stuff out there, and we just, you know, have to give it a little time to get it out of there, but we gonna take care of it.
Okay.
Just to let everyone know that, as a reminder, that this is just a condemnation process. After the condemnation, it doesn't necessarily mean that these homes will be demolished. Now, the ones that we send notices to, those are people that are actually living in the houses, but those trailers that need to be removed, if the property owner does not remove them in a timely manner, we will step in and have them removed. And that's for everything that's on this list. There is a process, and if they've come before city council, that means we've given them all the necessary steps, the timeframe that we needed to move forward to here. So the process will continue until it, it's condemned with the final meeting, and then after that, they will still have additional time, but it depends on how much time has already been provided.
Ms. Rock, excuse me, did you actually say that the trailer park itself, you're kinda working on condemning the entire trailer park?
The entire trailer park.
How does that affect the property owners that are compliant versus non-compliant?
So what'll happen is, if the property, since it is one big trailer park, the trailers that are burned, that are run down, if the property owner of that land does not communicate or do what they need to do, the people that we've notified, they own their trailers. If they maintain their trailers, then we won't touch those trailers, it's just the land itself will be condemned, those trailers that are actually in the TLC's name.
So the park won't be closed?
No, it won't be closed, as long as they maintain and keep everything up to compliance. Mainly, I wish we would have been able to show all the pictures, but if you ever gone down there, there are several trailers that are falling over, they're burnt, they, they look, it's horrible, but you have few that are trying to maintain their homes, that are trying to take care of them, so we can't punish everybody because this guy who owns this land doesn't wanna do correct.
Doesn't what?
Doesn't wanna do?
Okay, doesn't wanna do right thing?
Right.
Okay.
Now, 214 Syrah, this house has been abandoned for years. The house itself is actually, it's a sturdy house, but there's vandals living here. We've reached out to the homeowner for this property for the last three years and haven't had anybody to respond to us. There's a shed, as you can see, that's fallen in, there's abandoned car there, the back area of the house is falling in, and you have vagrants going in and out. So we're condemning it stating that it is, it is unlivable and stating that it is unsafe. We'll take necessary steps, not to actually demolish the property, but at least to board it up for that one. For 220 Duplex, this is a house, I spoke with the property owner, Ms. Gloria Evans on this house, the roof is collapsing, the floor is actually gone in this house. Again, you have people that are in, living inside of here, just like a lot of the abandoned properties, they're going in and out, the neighborhood, it's not that bad, they just have a lot of overgrowth. So this is another one that we may end up demolishing because of the repairs to it will be too costly. 320, 320 Keegan Drive, this house actually burned, it's right behind Starbucks, right on the other side of Starbucks, it's been burned for quite some time. They actually did an addition to this house, but without proper permits and things of that nature. So when the building official went in to inspect, he saw the addition, he saw the, the burn of the house, and based upon his recommendations, because the house with that part was not permitted, it would be more costly to have him to try to rebuild the house than it would be to just demolish it and start over. 508-509 is for Ms. Angela. Ms. Angela has tried to, to secure the structures as possible, best as possible, she is working, one of the trailers are, is secured, the other one is not so much, but it's gonna take a lot of work to bring both trailers into compliance.
Where is this?
Right now?
Scott Loop?
This is in the dula dump area. You know what I'm talking about, right down from the police station?
Yeah.
From the pool, right. These are old trailers, and it will take quite a bit of effort to bring them back up to compliance, but she's willing to do what she needs to do, but it still will go through the condemnation process. The next one, 645 Gentile. This is, I guess you can say in the Panaham area. We've dealt with the lady, the property owner of this house, and it's a sentimental trailer. We've worked with her for about two years, but the roof is starting to sag too much, the foundation is gone. She has a leakage in the back, so again, this one is gonna be unlivable, and it's been recommended by the CBO that it's condemned. 613 Gentile, this house has been left abandoned for quite some time. No one has been there, there's asbestos on the outside, as you can see just by the pictures itself, it, it needs to be condemned. Next one is 817 Fourth Street, this one is by Ms. Cynthia Mandarino, she's on the corner. She is in the historic district, and we've been working with her for quite some time. She had a tree to fall on her property, she's been having a hard time with trying to get contractors to work with her to try to bring the house into compliance. Unfortunately, it's gotten to the point that we have to take it on to the condemnation process. She is working with a contractor, but again, we've explained to her that until a permit is put in our hands with a listed contractor, it will still go through the condemnation process.
And like you said, it is in historic district.
It is, and HDC has approved bringing it to city council, recommending that it is condemned, or if it needs to go as far as being demolished, they've already approved This is 852 Second Street. At first looking at, the first glance of this house from the street, we didn't realize just how bad it really was until we entered the property and went around to the back. It's actually collapsing in on itself, and this again is right in, right in historic district, on Second Street, right down the street. We've reached out to the property owners, and they are aware of the house, they are aware of everything that needs to take place with the home, and they know that it'll be more costly to try to rebuild than to just tear it down and start all over.
Now, I've been contacted about this particular one, from my understanding, they have, had paid a contractor some money to go in and fix his house and?
We have no permits for that.
Wasn't, you don't have a permit for it?
I don't have any permits for 852 Second.
Let me ask you about this one, is it closer to Texas Street or University?
This one is closer to Texas Street.
Texas Street, okay.
It's right down the street from the utility service.
They said they paid the contractor to get the permit, $8,000.
They may have, but that's when you have to be aware of the contractor that you're working with. That's why we put out information about contractors that are being licensed and not licensed. If they would have worked with a licensed contractor and would have paid him, then the state would have had some legroom to go after him for the monies that they paid him. And yeah, I talked with her, and she explained to me how much she paid him to take care of this house and another house on Third Street.
And another house, right.
But because he wasn't a licensed contractor, I mean, we, even if he was, it would be out of our hands, the insurance company will be the one to step in and take care, take over. The next property is 1124 Welch Street. This house has been giving us some problems before, I think this was on the radar, the police radar at one time, they were showing like maybe gang violence being here, there was a shootout at this house at one point in time or another, you can see the graffiti on the walls where gang members were there, we went inside and were scared to actually walk through because of the, the floor, the ceiling, and how everything was starting to collapse. And because we knew people were going in and out of this place, and because of the condition of the place, we had to just bring it before city council to condemn it, to make it unsafe, so that if anyone walked through this building, they're do so on their own, and the property owners nor the city will be held liable if someone went in this building, and we have notices posted saying that it's condemned and unsafe. And that's gonna be it, 'cause everything else, we talked about, the South Drive, the only other one we didn't talk about was 115 Demazir. And this one is actually one street over from Front Street. This is behind, it's a brick red building, house on Front Street, it's hidden really, you wouldn't be able to see it from the street, it has that much overgrowth. We've reached out to the property owner concerning this property, we have not heard anything. And that's what I have.
Do we have individuals who can, wanna say something about these properties? We don't typically do it, but we did allow him to speak, so just, Steve, if you can queue us up with three minutes on the clock over there? Yeah, I think you got a hand right here. Yeah, will you come forward, state your first and last name, and please tell us which property you're referring to, I'm speaking on behalf of?
I'm Cynthia Mandarino, and 817 Fourth Street is where we live. It's the one that might be known by many of you because it's been an eyesore for some time, and so the first thing I have to say is, I can only apologize for how long it's taken for us to try to get through this. I'm gonna try to be really brief. I was a Katrina survivor and moved here for love, right after Hurricane Katrina, and financially, we struggled for many years until 2020, sorry, I'm really nervous, 2023. At that point, I had owned my house in New Orleans for 25 years, and we knew we had to make major repairs to the house here, and so we sold the house in New Orleans, we were so excited, we can finally get a new roof, we can clean everything up, and we were under contract when the first limb of the tree fell. We were under contract to sell our house in New Orleans, and we found someone, we wouldn't be able to pay to have the, you know, part of the tree removed, until we went to closing, so we were praying that we would go to closing, we did. We begged our tree man to come and remove the rest of the tree, and for weeks, there were reasons he couldn't, and the rest of the house fell, and it's a devastating, dramatic thing for us, and we're just grateful that none of us were in the house at the time, considering the enormous tree that fell. Considering the enormous tree that fell, um, the house is actually in very good shape considering, and that's because it's an old, old house. I have had a struggle finding people who want to work on preserving old houses. Mr. David Duggins is our contractor. He's working out an issue with his license right now. And he is ready to go and take care of the structural issue, the new roof. And then we have an electrician and a plumber that will do a couple of other things that really weren't even affected by that, just because we're doing a big permit. And I just, I wanna apologize, there are so many reasons that it's been ugly for so long. But I want, it will be beautiful, it will be.
And we, we're out of time here, but how much time are we saying before some of these projects will start to get addressed with the property?
Well, as far as the outside, we believe that, you know.
And I know, I know you said it's contingent on his, something with his license, but do we have any time?
Right, we can't get the permit yet until that's dealt with. But we, we've gone through, um, probably twenty-plus contractors trying to get a plan that made sense and most of them.
So not really sure on the time that it gave, the work can be complete at this time?
Well, when you do a permit, usually you have a year, and I don't think that would be a problem, right? Yeah, so to do the structural part, to do the outside part, we, we're starting back on, well, we've already started back on it. We have a onsite, uh, storage container and we've been emptying the part of the house that he needs to access. Um, and we're cleaning up the yard more. We're about to cut parts of the, there's a carport that was crushed and it's a real eyesore. We're starting tomorrow, I'm gonna be cutting the struts off that, so.
Yeah, you got a brief statement, sir?
Well, I was just gonna tell you, um, hi.
Uh, please state your, please get to the microphone, state your first and last name and then.
Some of y'all know me, I know, I've known Dale for twenty-five years, long time. Some of y'all don't. Um, I'm a park service trained, uh, guy who does restoration work, okay? And there's not that much wrong with that house.
What's your first and last name, sir?
Oh, Greg Duggan, I'm sorry. Uh, but there's not that much structure. I have brought buildings and structures back for the park service that are in much, much worse shape than that one. Now then, that being said, the federal government has a whole lot more resources than any of us put together do, okay? But there's not that much wrong structurally with that house, okay? Yes, it has a holding roof. A lot of houses get hit by a security, have a holding roof, that's just not that big of a deal, so.
Right, and I'm not sure, no, we've got others. Council, y'all got any comments, questions on this one?
I, I have a question, you say you've done park service work?
Yes, ma'am.
So you have a license, so was there, was there a problem?
Well, I, I, there wasn't a problem, or it wasn't an issue until they changed the law back in August of last year, was it not? That I think they changed the law. It said if you, if the work was more than seventy-five hundred dollars, you had to have a contract, residential contractor's license to perform structural repairs, okay?
You don't have.
It's actually reduced down to fifty. It's been reduced down to fifty.
Okay, but anyway, but I've never needed a contractor's license until that law changed, so. That's, that's the reason why I haven't gotten it yet, I just never needed it. We have had all the other qualifications, as far as I've always carried workers' comp, general liability. Uh, you know, for the last fifteen years, even though I wasn't required to carry it, so.
So how long is it gonna take, you have your, so you have applied, you're just waiting to?
I've got, I, I, I have applied, there's some documents waiting on for, for our accountant that you have to upload to the, to the site. And then I don't know when the next testing is, uh, it doesn't, uh, doesn't specify on their website, uh, Louisiana Contractors website, when the testing occurs. They said that each testing center sets their own schedule and they don't, they don't publish that well, so, on the website, so, anyway. Uh, there, there's many testing centers, it, it used to be you could only test in Baton Rouge. Now you can test in Alexandria, Shreveport, and seven or eight other different places around town. So, or around the state. And they don't publish when they test, so I gotta figure out when that is, so.
Hopefully you can get that quick, cause he's one of, just historically has been one of the most.
Right.
Uh, caring, especially when it comes to historic structures.
Right.
Very respected.
And Natchitoches is known for historic structures and preservation of their historic structures. And if we cannot tear this one down, considering it is, it is, is on the edge of historic district and it could be a very unique house. And I, I don't think there's another one like it with that, that is called a jerking head roof on that particular house. I don't think there's another one like it that has that particular style of roofing and architecture on, on anywhere in the district, so.
Well, thank you, we'll, we'll, uh, keep, um, close contact with it and certainly. Chantrelle will be our pointed contact on it.
Okay.
Yep, okay, thank you. Is, somebody else here to speak on another one of these properties today? Alrighty, again, this is, um, for introduction, so in typically with your condemnations, there's, you know, most ordinances, you have a two-week layover, if you will, but this one, I believe Chantrelle, it's thirty days?
It's thirty days.
So that's thirty day period. As Councilman Nielsen said, it would be wise to, you know, stay in contact with, uh, Chantrelle Rock or Nicole at P and Z to, um, let them know what kind of changes are happening. Alrighty, um, two more for introduction. This one is read by Councilman Harrington, the next one's read by Councilman Harrington.
Ordinance seven of twenty twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchitoches to award the bid for water distribution system improvements. This is in Brede Town Phase Two, bid number zero six seven two. Um, there were five bid proposals that were received and opened. And, um, the, the one with the lesser amount, the one that won is CDE Construction LLC out of Keithville, Louisiana, for six hundred, six hundred and one thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty cents. Um, whereas on bid, on, sorry, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, the appointed committee of Clarissa Smith, Finance Director Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing, Bukhar Mohammed, Utility Director, and Rosemary Eli, Councilwoman, reviewed the bid proposals uh, for water distribution system improvements in Brede Town Phase Two. And the above appointed committee members unanimously recommend the city award the bid to the lowest bidder, which is CDE Construction LLC, in the amount of six hundred one thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty cents. That's for introduction only.
All right, look, we have historically budgeted about seven hundred thousand, um, a year. Given the need, we're gonna have to try some kind of way to see if we could, um, increase that. So this falls within that seven hundred thousand. We also have some plans that are just about complete for South Williams, I think I mentioned this before. Those are gonna be above our typical budget, um, to do South Williams Drive or Avenue, whatever it's called. I think Avenue, is it? And, um, that's, that's gonna be about one point three million. So, um, we're just, you know, it's one of those tough things, it's very expensive to change out and, um, but we've got some requests in the Capitol LA, which is state funding. Uh, we also looking at, uh, Delta Regional Authority and just gotta keep on chipping away. And like I said, try to work, uh, the best we can to increase that budget, um, from seven hundred thousand, which is a significant portion itself, but we understand, uh, certainly more needs to happen so that we could, uh, combat that discoloration of water and things like that. Our guys do a great job treating the water, but it's, uh, through those old distribution lines that we have issues. So we're just trying to change out as many of those as we possibly can. We started Brede Town last year. So, I mean, I like the idea of if we finish one section, be finished with that section. But, you know, again, there are some other sections that we're trying to look at that would get a lot of complaints and things like that, so. Um, costs a lot to run a city. Uh, any comments or questions, council, about this? I think this is a little bit under budget, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I think the bid that we receive is about forty thousand, um, less than what the designer's estimate is. So that's a little bright side of it. But we are gonna be as aggressive and have been as aggressive as we possibly can. We're trying to, uh, change out as many of those water lines as we possibly can, so, um, just a slow, slow process.
Still some brown water.
Yep. Okey dokey, again, this will be up for, uh, a vote at our next meeting on the twenty-fourth. All right, uh, next and final item for introduction is, uh, read by Councilwoman Elrash Smith.
Thank you, ma'am, this is ordinance number zero zero eight. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchitoches, Ronnie Williams, to execute a lease in favor of Elliot Properties LLC of those twenty-one thousand seven eighty-five point seven six and eighteen thousand square foot areas shown as and depicted on a June eighth nineteen sixty-two survey by A.J. Brouet and on a September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one survey by Brandon Thornton, and further providing for advertising of the lease and, and an effective date. Whereas the city of Natchitoches, Natchitoches is the owner of those lots shown on the airport layout plan, which said lots are available for lease and more particularly is the owner of a twenty-one thousand seven eighty-five point seventy-six square foot area um, shown by survey A.J. Brouet dated June eighth nineteen sixty-two. Whereas Airport Director Justin Foshee has negotiated the terms of the lease to Elliot Properties LLC of the property described, uh, more fully shown in the survey and eighteen thousand seven square foot area of, on that survey for Brandon Thornton dated September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Whereas further, the terms of the lease are for a twenty-five year period with consideration of three thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty-seven, I forgot twenty-seven, but fifty-seven cents as set forth in attached lease agreement by, by and between the city of Natchitoches and Elliot Properties LLC. Uh, now therefore be it ordained by the city council that after due proceedings and advertisement, that the city does lease that property described, uh, more fully on a survey by Brouet and, uh, Brandon Thornton to Elliot Properties for the term of twenty-five years with an init, with an initial annual consideration of the three thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars twenty-seven cents, with an option to extend the lease for an additional twenty-five year term. And that the notice of this proposed art is to be published three times in the fifteen days, one week apart in the Natchitoches Times, the legal journal for the city, and the ordinance to be posted in the city hall. And this is for introduction only. And also this, that's it.
Ed, any other specifics about this particular item?
This is the crop duster operation, you see all the crop dusters flying around town. This is that company, they're doing some reorganization and moving this to the property portion instead of an operational portion of their, uh, of their business. So it's more of a, um, I guess, a legal type, uh, transaction they wanna do and it's supposed to benefit them as well with their taxes. And they also, right now, the lot is vacant. But they will be building the largest hangar on the airport. The steel is already on site, so it'll be the largest building on the airport once they're finished with it. But I don't think they'll start till, uh, probably sometime this summer or maybe early fall. They have, uh, I think they're in line with Ed Angel, he builds steel buildings out of Shreveport. They're waiting on him to, you know, get to where he can build that building for.
Any comments or questions? Alrighty, um, that Thornton, he just does the survey.
That, that's correct, he's a surveyor.
Is that the same one?
Mm-hmm. He, he, his office is on Front Street.
What's that?
His office is on Front Street.
Okay.
Brandon Thornton.
That's not the one doing the fire station, though, that's another guy?
That's a different Brandon.
Okay, gotcha, alright. I got you, okay. Alright, again, this is for introduction, so we'll say it again. So just a legal thing, like you're really saying, that's still gonna be tenants. Okay, alright, this is, um, we've got a resolution. And again, those three are for introduction, we got a resolution by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, mayor, resolution number twenty of twenty twenty-five. Resolution authorizing Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with the state of Louisiana Department of the Treasury for the resurfacing of Barclay Drive. Whereas Act seven seventy-six of twenty twenty-four, regular legislative session, appropriated a hundred thousand dollars to the city of Natchitoches for street improvements. And whereas the appropriated funds are being administered by the state of Louisiana Department of the Treasury, designated herein as state. And whereas the city of Natchitoches must execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with the state in order to receive said funds. And whereas the current condition of Barclay Drive and the recurring cost for maintenance of this street make it a high priority for resurfacing. And whereas estimated cost for the rehabilitation of Barclay Drive fits with the appropriated funding amount, now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby authorize Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with the state of Louisiana Department of the Treasury for the resurfacing of Barclay Drive and to comply with all provisions thereof. And I move to adopt resolution number twenty of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made in second, again, as it says, what Councilman Nielsen read, the state, uh, decided to give us a hundred thousand and for a street, uh, improvement, Barclay. So this is an aerial view, um, but I'm, this is just a resolution, so I don't have the surface view. Um, but I mean, if you wanna take, go take a look at it, I mean, it, it certainly needs some work on Barclay Drive, so. Um, and yeah, it's, it's in, it's in pretty bad shape. So, um, this will help, we may have to match it a little bit to get more of the street done. Um, I think the figure we looked at about a hundred and eighty-five thousand, but again, a hundred of that is paid for by the state of Louisiana, so. Uh, any, any comments or questions here on this one? Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, I, I can't, I, I mean, I guess that's where, so you're saying, why do we have a CA with them? I mean, that's where the money is coming from? Would that make, would that say why it is? Yeah, the money is coming from, uh, the Department of Treasury, what's that?
No, you're right, you're right.
Okay.
It's coming, yeah, it's coming from there. Cause it, it's not attached to a particular program or, or anything like that. So it's, we had to do CA with the Department of Treasury, cause that's the only entity that's actually directly attached to the funding.
Right. They have different things that they call it, this is not Capitol LA. They have what you call like a direct funding, uh, direct cash, if you will. So this is one of those that's kinda direct funding, so. Any other comments or questions? Alright, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy. And let me say before that, this is the sub area area. Y'all familiar with that, the sub area?
It is adjacent to one of our parks, too.
Right.
It's pretty heavily utilized for practice fields.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
This time of year.
Mm-hmm, yep. Alright, thanks for that comment. Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote?
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
That emotion carries. This time I asked if someone would, um, um, execute a motion to add resolution twenty-two of two thousand twenty-five?
Yes, I so move that we add resolution zero two two of two thousand twenty-five to the agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second, it, just something that came up, I don't think this was on our part, um, maybe oversight by DOTD. But, um, it's one of those airport improvement projects that's gonna be fully paid for by them. So, um, I didn't think you all would mind amending the agenda to do it. So motion made in second, it, y'all got a question about that? Alright, um, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote?
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
Alright, then that motion carries, we now have resolution, uh, number twenty-two of twenty twenty-five on the agenda. And it's read by Councilman PT.
Thank you, ma'am, resolution number twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for improvements at the Natchitoches Regional Airport. Whereas the city of Natchitoches has requested funding assistance from the Louisiana Department of Transportation to replace airfield signage and lights. Whereas the LA DOTD will provide the necessary funding to replace the airfield signage and lights and reimburse the sponsor up to four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars of the project. May I so move to adopt resolution number twenty-two?
Second.
Motion made in second, Ed, you wanna, I know we've seen this before, but just.
We, we have, in fact, they authorized us to go out for bid, uh, accept bids, award the bid, all that was done. But they had some turnover with our program manager, with the, with the state, the LA.
But they had some turnover with our program manager with the, with the state, the LA DOTD Aviation Division. And when she left, they didn't know what exactly was left to be done or what to pick up. So as we were getting into this, the engineer just discovered Friday afternoon that this was not done, and this is the, a key part of it, which, uh, is, authorizes you to sign the grant to accept the money. So we have a pre-construction meeting on Wednesday, two days from now. And if this was not signed before that meeting, we would have to postpone the project. So, uh, normally I don't like to do this, but I did request that this be on here, but it was, uh, just due to turnover at the LA DOTD, and some things fell in the crack down there. And we're just trying to make it good so we can start this project sometime.
Thanks for the explanation, Ed. Got any comments or questions for Ed? Alright, I'll just say before we put this for a vote, you know, and I get what you're saying, Ed, we don't like to do it, but that's why we do have some of these motions that allow some in the agenda at the times that we need to do it, so. Um, again, it was out of our, uh, control on this one, alright? Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote?
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
Alright, that motion carries. Now for some announcements, our next meeting is on March twenty-fourth of this year. Um, regroup, we sent out a regroup today dealing with a boil advisory, I think it was, in Oak Grove area. Uh, must have been some line that was ruptured, uh, Bukar. But, um, so we're, we're good there. That's a good app to, to sign up for Golden Natchitoches. You know, we kicked off Blooming on the Bricks on Saturday along with Reading on the River. Alright, so you have up top Blooming on the Bricks, down low, uh, Reading on the River. So I think it was pretty good. People were out and about, had some good weather, so, um, this is our time. Uh, now where we have some, some things going on, so again, download that Golden Natchitoches app. Uh, this is a cool deal. I've heard people talk about this. Uh, but the Boja Parish Community College is making it happen, and kudos to them for doing it. Uh, this is their CDL program. So, uh, that means individuals who are interested in being truck drivers, uh, they can get their license to drive trucks right here in the city of Natchitoches very soon. Very soon. So again, I think this is a great, um, addition that, uh, as we say, bipsy, as we say it, right? Is added. So March eleventh, uh, at four PM, if you can come to that, please do, to support that, alright? Uh, Steel Magnolia Run is going to be this Saturday? Is that Saturday? Yeah, that's Saturday. Uh, from eight AM to ten AM, and so I think we've got a couple. Uh, I know Miss Stacy is going to participate. I don't know about you, Steve, this year. Um, but, so again, uh, that, that's a, one of the runs that, um, certainly are popular throughout the year. Alrighty, and this is taking place on Saturday as well. So it's the pub crawl that is now under, um, the leadership, the organization, if you will, of Fauna. Uh, and this is the tenth annual, but Fauna will be taking over this year, as you can tell, the little, uh, theme with the cat and, and, and the puppy there. Um, and so Alliance Compressors is going to be a part of it as well, so Eventbrite, we've been announcing this for, uh, some time. So that should be bringing some people to, you know, downtown and things of that nature. Alrighty? Okay, so this is an annual film festival. And you may not realize it, but, uh, Kelly Jackson, young lady, she's been organizing this now, it's her eighth annual year. She's brought some individuals here. I know one year there was an actor, I can't remember his name, but he, uh, was here on, you know, downtown Natchitoches and things of that nature, so. Um, she's got some things going on, on the twenty-second, um, eleven to four, uh, PM, and it's going to be at the, at the cinema here. And then she's got a celebration at the Riverside Reserve, uh, from six to ten PM. And so, uh, there are film screenings, um, there's some judging, I can see that, and, uh, just some other activity all centered around film, alright, so.
And it's usually very nice, Mayor.
Yep, I've, I've seen you there a few times. Yep, so it i- it is nice. Okay, what do we have? We have the BDJ Crawfish Bowl. It's going to be on the twenty-ninth, two to five. Community crawfish and a cause, um, and so again, obviously, uh, what BDJ does, uh, workforce development, workforce training, so, um, I guess, I'm, I'm guessing that's the cause that they're talking about here, but certainly, uh, and then it says free entry. Hmm, free entry. To eat the crawfish?
No.
It's about twenty dollars.
It's twenty-five dollars.
Okay. Did it have a price on that?
No, no, but I know it, I know it's, it's twenty-five dollar donation, and you get three pounds of crawfish and corn and potatoes, so.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, I said free.
Wanted to clarify that.
I was going to bring all my kids too. I've got four kids, baby. Alright, so grand opening, what is this, the Buccaneer Bayou?
The new.
Oh, yeah, this is cool. It's going to be at the Dark Woods, so just adding to what we can offer here. Of course, we're a small town, but I like, uh, this a lot, Dark Woods, you know, very innovative. If you haven't gone there, uh, not just the scare stuff, uh, but they do, uh, Christmas. And now this is going to be something you could do most, uh, days in Natchitoches, so that, that's something that we're excited about, so. On the twenty-ninth, there's their grand opening.
They said Jack Sparrow is going to be there.
Yeah, like a Jack Sparrow impersonator.
Okay. I got you, I got you. Cool deal. Uh, you saw, uh, Summerlin? Jason? Yeah, he was, I saw him too. Okay, so what do we have here? The original purpose of, okay, Brothers Keeper Motorcycle Club. I think this is something that Chief Wayne is a part of. So, Chief, you want to say a little bit about this? You know what this is about? No?
I didn't know, it was going to be up here.
Oh, you didn't? Okay. Alright, but.
We're going to have a, uh, we're going to have a barbecue plate lunch and a what we call a river run. It's just a little poker run for the, uh, or a run for the motorcycles riding around the river. It's just going to be a barbecue plate lunch, bar, chicken and pork sandwich.
That seven to eighty, that's your, does it center station?
It's going to be down on the riverbank.
Down on the riverbank, okay. Cool deal, alright, awesome. It's going to be April fifth. Yeah, April fifth, okay.
So if you know anybody that wants to buy, eat barbecue, come buy barbecue.
Are you going to be cooking?
Uh, yes, we'll be cooking.
Look.
Did you say barbecue?
Barbecue.
And we'll have a, anybody ride motorcycle, send them down to ride motorcycle.
Now, Chief, Chief can cook now, I'm telling you, he can work that grill. I remember you, you remember you cooked for the whole, remember, didn't you do something for the whole city? About three or four years ago, we did that?
We tried, but we're not that good.
Alright, so save the date, NPFD presents the Third Annual City Life Crawfish Cookoff, NPFD. Fair Board, okay. That's going to be May seventeenth, uh, two thousand twenty-five, so more details. So just kind of put out a flyer, letting you know that what's coming. Alright, cool deal. So several events happening, alright.
Mayor.
And we don't have the Jazz Fest. When is that, Councilman Harrington? Do you know?
It's in May.
No, I don't. It's always Mother's Day weekend.
Okay, so that's going to be May. So we'll, we'll put out something dealing with that. I, I see it, Chief Wayne.
I just wanted to say our donations are going for the Lions Club, is what we raise money for, so it's, it's, it's going for a local cause.
Okay, okay, thanks a lot for that, Chief. So we also have a community culture parade. I think this is to replace the Black History Parade, is that what it's doing?
It is.
Yeah, remember we had, uh, the forecast, it rained, uh, that day, so it's been, um, rescheduled, I could say? Uh, the twenty-second of this month, so not this Saturday, but the Saturday following, alright? And the parade starts at two PM on Texas Street?
Third Street.
Third Street.
On the parking lot of the courthouse.
I think that's what it says up there, yeah, it says it up top. Okay, good. Alright, thank you. A lot of announcements, again, download the Golden Natchitoches app.
Excuse me, Mayor. They're asking for the route. The route will be left on Third Street, left on Texas Street, making a left on MLK, a right on Amulet, uh, and a right on North Street, and ending it at the Ben Park.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, alright. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, um, thank you all for being here tonight. This time we hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.